First of all, I'm here. I'm demanding that I receive the officers that murdered my son's name. I need to know their names. I want them fired. I don't want them being on the doo like these people standing around watching us. We've got more officers here every time we come. I don't, I don't know if one of them are the ones that murdered my son. I need to know the officers that made the murders, you know? So, I want that. And I actually wanted to see if you guys would think about doing an oversight committee? Uh, because I know this is gonna happen again. And I don't want the parents or family members to be in here anyway. You know? Celebrating old people, young people, people going to trips and everything. I don't wanna have to sit right here like mourning and hurting, you know? Have you ever thought about that yet? Oversight committee? Yeah. I'm concerned, you know? So you don't mind just letting the people come in here and mourn? And hear you celebrate other people while their kids are murdered or dead? You don't care about another day? Yeah. So oversight committee would be something good that you guys could think about, you know? Just for the people, because this is not happening, you know? All these procedures, the way you guys handle things is...
That's the mothers.
You just, the killer cops just kill people, you know?
Killed by police officer.
They don't deserve life, you know? And murdered, probably murdered my son over fifteen seconds. They didn't give him anything. So basically, we need some, you know, oversight committee. Somebody to oversight the officers and you don't have no control over them. She's got no control, so at least somebody else can, you know, have some type of control or oversight like this. All the officers are human just like we are. They just got a badge. You guys let them lead it. Execution, jury, and murders. They could just do that with no problem. Officer involved, she, oh, it's okay. It's not okay. My son died in that. Mother's Day passed by. The worst.
Black lives don't matter in Chicago though.
It was the worst day ever, guys. Not having your child there, your only child, Mother's Day.
Black lives don't matter.
I was expecting it, but you know how that happens.
Nine hundred abortions every day. Nine hundred black babies killed every day.
Like that, but no hesitation. I know, you guys don't wanna hear it, but I'm gonna keep letting you hear it. Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, wife, man, should be...
There we go, hailing. Here it comes.
It was unnecessary, but for all to see.
Save his!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Save his!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Save his!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Save!
I say!
So, what did they get out of that? Who knows?
Yep.
Say, do they do it every time? They've been doing this every, every month. In Torrance. Where you going? Can you move over?
I was really grateful that you gave us an agenda item for the many past weeks. But I have to say that this is not okay taking away the agenda item. This is not solved. It's not finished. The officers roam free. They may kill again. It's legitimized this municipal sanctioned killing of a twenty-three-year-old African-American young man who's been demonized relentlessly with all kinds of propaganda spread. Claiming that he had a gun. Then the story evolved to, oh, it was a BB gun. But you called it another something else to confuse people. It's not okay. His mother's... I can't imagine what Christopher's mother is going through on Mother's Day. And then you guys cut her off when she only needed about forty more seconds on her comment.
Twice.
Twice.
Yeah, okay, twice. It's, it's just bizarre. I can't imagine. How, how could these? It's like these officers have more rights than everybody else.
Right.
That's right.
They're not a fucking law.
Say his name.
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name.
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name.
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Ashay!
Ashay!
And also that in God's re-trust thing is incredibly divisive. It makes no sense.
Christian fascism.
Christian fascism!
It's not even, it's not even reflective necessarily of many people of faith. It's disrespectful to, to me.
That's why we can't speak about it.
Are you gonna shut down the agenda before we even get to that? It's disrespectful of people that are not monotheistic or may not necessarily be monotheistic.
Sir, you have to speak on that item during that item. You can speak on that item during that item.
Oh, thank you.
Hi. Uh, my name is Sean Loscawala. What's your name?
What was your name?
Sean Loscawala.
You call Cameron Price.
That is Cameron.
That's Cameron.
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 Why didn't he speak?
No, speak.
Well, we have a sign up reason.
No, it's right. First amendment rights.
We're calling people off the list, so this is not Mr. Price.
Your name's a little less jumped to wait until your name's called.
I had a point in that case.
Next person, though.
Let him know!
You're like wearing his face.
His name is Cameron, let him speak.
Mark Davis.
His name is Cameron, let him speak.
He had a gun in his face three hours ago.
Let's be, that's his American name. Come on now.
Yeah.
Arthur Shopper?
Whoa! Say your name! You fucking know who he is! And you're letting him speak over him? What a gun this thing is!
A gun in his face! I'm eating pops!
Uh, cancel that. I can hear a plane about to remove him from our yard.
It's supposed to remove from people's...
No shit! Thank you! Thank you! Thank you! Oh, yes! Something has to be upset in here.
Let's get it right clear.
I'm a city resident. Been a city resident for seventeen years of my life. Love this city with all my heart. Right? Um, I'm great away. I'm a music producer, audio engineer. I record, uh, many artists. Artists that have been number one on Billboard charts, you know? And, uh, I have a home studio. And today I was having a session. And in the middle of the session, I have my headphones on and I see the door swing open. And I look, and I see a cop there with a gun pointing at my face. Hands up. Show your head, you can see him. And we're, the artist pops up out of the booth. Um, everybody's like confused what's going on. Got our hands up. Tells to leave. Tells to get out of this, you know? Went to my backyard. They're all sitting down. And, um... Yeah. Asking us questions. And they told us, somebody called the cops. Two friends who were working at my house. And they were my friends. And they were two, two young black men, right? And people coming and out of my house all of a sudden. They're like, you know, people coming out of my house. Right here in front of me, right? And there's never been a claim... There's never been any comments, anything. I couldn't, uh, in that moment, I wasn't even looking out there. There was five of us. Given the timing, the body cam, but it's just coming out. It should have, whatever, what it in the... Is we got outside. We're really, you know, of my house. As they split the cops, they put their hands up. He came up to, to, uh... Seems like a threat in any way. So he kept his hands up all the time. In other ways, just like us. I'm like really scared, you know? About my friends' safety. You know, my safety is, is one of the... Many of my black friends and many of my friends... All regular. This is our first shocker. Uh... The video that's been released, first comment. Don't matter, I'll take care of it. Fuck you! Yes, we have absolutely worthless and maniable... Shut the fuck up bitch. I also have other parents. My kidney and...
The mother I can't breathe in mother!
Shut up bitch.
Shut the fuck up.
Shut me up.
Breathing mother!
Talking to you. Talking to you.
Breathing mother! Where's the breaking up?
I will call her. So in my... I just... What a person's grace may be that is not in use to control the rights of others. And that's something that I'm speaking to. Others have communicated with me. But they didn't do this meeting, they want to be... They should, because of these disruptions. And I speak to him about this, which means you're quite worried about his taxes. She has not once but twice been thrown out of meetings. Janitor had to throw her out of the airport as soon. Mr. Evan Budge, the so-called fake priest, calls DeAndre Mitchell fake niggas. And then one of their members calls DeAndre Mitchell a token. This is not about black lives. This is about a random need to destroy law and order.
Somebody's dead! Somebody's dead! Thank you. My god!
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
And the Torrance Police Department...
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Folks who murdered...
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say your name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his 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 name! Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Ashay!
Ashay!
Look at all these fucking pups, oh shit, scared of black people.
We're not in here, you scare through the shit.
Where's that swerve now? Hot trucks! Hot trucks!
There's a doctor in this room!
That's scary! Fuck on things!
We're scared of...
She's like that, walks up and pulling the cuffs? Yeah, real bad.
Everyone said not to let them work.
Wow.
And you went, "Not see?"
We're in the stairs, yeah.
Stupid fucking people here.
Say his name! Say his name!
Fuck you bitch! Fuck you bitch! Fuck you!
That's why they get fucking shot. This is why they get fucking shot. Fuck you too, homie. Fuck you dog. What the fuck you gonna do bitch? Yeah, that's right. That's right. What the fuck you gonna do? Not a motherfucking thing.
Take the shot, Mike.
Alright, you take the shot. This is why they get fucking shot. Shut the fuck up!
It's alright bitch. Talk for the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is why they get shot. They don't know how to comply. They don't know how to... Fucking comply. That's why they get shot. I'm sorry, I've been the truth, man. Fucking shot. They definitely get fucking shot. That's why they get fucking shot. They don't know how to fucking comply, man. I'm sorry. They say this isn't fucking racist.
To quote my philosopher, DeAndre Mitchell, God is dead and so am I.
That's not true.
This is not true. Fuck you!
God is my... God and rules are right, dawg.
Fuck you! Fuck you!
Oh, everything, there's a race fucking card, Jesus. It's a race fucking card. Fucking ridiculous, man.
Using the F word.
Yes, this is what I was gonna say.
Fuck him, man. He wants to get beat up, I guess. He wants to go to jail.
Say his name! Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name!
Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Say his name!
This is the reason why black people get arrested. They go to fucking jail. This is why they fucking get arrested. Fucking hell, it's fly, homie. You don't fucking fly!
They're mine.
I've been president for fifty-five years.
So fucking wet.
So, fuck me up.
You're fucking wet, but you fuck us! Now, why you angry?
I don't like my tax dollar being spent on killing.
On killing? On killing? Really? Do you know how many blacks are killed a year? Do you even know how many blacks are killed a year, bro? No, you don't know.
He's a fucking R Street, R City Council.
Who's street?
R Street!
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 Fucking street!
R Street!
But who do they call, who do they call when they need a cop?
Hahahaha! Happens to humor. Right? He used to tell me DeAndre Mitchell's life mattered ever.
R City! R City! R City! R City!
Did you get my face again? No? He wouldn't say DeAndre Mitchell's life mattered. Think about it.
R City! R City! R City! R City!
Yeah, right. Hell yeah! I love Jesus. I love God. I love Jesus. I love God.
How is justice anyway?
Is that your age, little bitch? I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the punk behind you.
Black lives matter!
That's right.
Black lives matter!
All lives matter! All lives matter! All lives matter! Lives matter!
Lives matter!
All lives matter!
How is this happening?
Hell, man! Are you female?
I'm male, I fucking... Fuck off!
Say to me! Not one bit, bitch. Not one bit. Motherfucker.
God said there would be lightning, just putting it. Really?
No fuck, fuck is gonna happen? Two men, they're grouped and fucking, they're wearing some little... Fucking people. Some fucking poop. Okay, they're, they're fucking good. They're fucking good. Damn right, it's all good. Damn right, it's all good, brother. Yeah, yeah, motherfucker. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah, look at you, fucking, you ain't shit, motherfucker. This is the fucking five foot what? Five foot six? Motherfucker? Yeah. Glasses? Act bad. Act, act bad, act bad. Is that right, brother?
I don't need to, bro? Because look at you, god.
Look at you, homie! Look at you!
I know, I'm not, so I'm not even saying shit.
Talking massa. All you motherfuckers talking massa. That's how you're talking, huh?
They think it's a game!
They think it's a job!
They think it's a game!
They think it's a job!
They think it's a game!
They think it's a job!
They think it's a game!
They think it's a job!
They think it's a game!
They think it's a job!
Result of weak leadership.
They think it's a job!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it?
Now!
We don't get it!
Shut it down!
We don't get it!
Shut it down!
What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want it? What do we want?
Justice!
When do we want? What do we want?
Justice!
Who they, who they gonna call? Will they eat somebody? Who they gonna call? Okay, they're not teaching young girls not to be mother... That's what they should be teaching. Why don't they teach their kids to comply with the cops? Why aren't they teaching that? Why don't they teach the cops to comply? Why don't, why don't they teach the kids to comply?
You are disrupting our media.
Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Gary! 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 Fuck you, Gary!
If you do not pay, you are subject to a writ!
Fuck you, Fury!
I'm going to be clear! Fuck you, Gary!
And they wonder why they get shot. They wonder why they get arrested.
And you will...
Fuck you, Gary!
They wonder why they get shot and why they get arrested.
Fuck you, Gary!
We're people for...
Fuck you, Gary! Fuck you, Gary!
This is your last warning.
Fuck you, Gary!
To be...
Fuck you, Fury!
Or you will be...
Fuck you, Gary!
The spot you are...
Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Fury!
For...
Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Gary!
These motherfuckers should get arrested, but the cops are not doing nothing because they just...
Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Fury! Fuck you, Fury!
Let's go! Ow! Fuck you!
You know what, I'm here, dawg.
My hands are up. This should touch me, that's all I...
Yeah, I'm getting my stuff. I'm getting my stuff. I'm getting my stuff.
Get out!
Lock the doors. Back up. Move forward.
Fuck you!
You won't go down. Everybody will go down. Down, right, where? Get out of here. Get out.
Scared of black cats, huh? Look at them.
Hold on. Hold on, gotta go.
Fuck you!
Scum aside, new floor!
You could avoid this!
The face!
You could avoid this! Do the right thing! He's right here!
DeAndre Mitchell! Christopher DeAndre Mitchell!
Now, that...
Now, why don't they, why don't they teach the black community to comply? Why don't they teach the black community to stop having kids out of wedlock? Why don't they teach the black community to stop having fatherless babies?
Here we go, everybody. This is a picture of white supremacy right here.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, you mentally ill? Okay, I don't even have it really here.
Are you shaking? You seem to be sick. Yeah, you are. I see your eyes all red and up. Are you on a medication? It sure looks like you are. I'm not tripping, I'm standing. This is great theater. Who needs Hulu? When you got the...
Fuck you! Don't you fucking touch a woman, you pussy!
See, you wouldn't have missed units, Michaela. You're... Call the police! Here we go.
Yeah, but who do they call when they need the cops? No. Who do these people call when they need somebody?
This is Torrance, folks. Hey, this is what you want, right?
Don't shoot! They're violating the cops' case!
Dylan Grace is gonna have to pay me. I'm getting a lot of photos.
Fuck you!
Back up! Back up! You're under pressure! Back up!
Fuck you!
Back up! Fuck! 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 Fuck!
These guys, people are out of fucking mind. People are fucking mad.
What's really going on here? This is Josh. This is Josh. This is a lot of...
So, is this gonna...
Where is she? You did not have a black woman back there!
How is this happening, God? How is this happening, God? Not at all, man.
I wish there was this about that over the guy.
We need to kill us out!
Does it bring back the ones to me? Guess this is what you want.
Ian, 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 who do they have?
Jeremy! Eugene! Jeremy, Eugene, and Sheila!
She was right next to you, what happened?
People are fucking out of line.
We can walk in your door now, bro.
Arthur, where you going?
Bring her out! Bring her out! Bring her out! Bring her out!
People are fucking out of line, and it's black, it matters, I don't know.
You need to take that to somebody, are you listening to me? I'm fighting for her back there! It is not safe for her back there! I am fighting for her safety right now! I am fighting for her safety right now!
Right, you're right. Sorry, we'll see you tomorrow, we have to hurry.
Help me bust out this door.
Bring her out! 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 Bring her out!
They snatched the last... You knew her banked, I can leave her alone!
People are out of line.
What is it? Is it live?
These people are out of line, yeah.
Hey, everybody, this is, this is my city, Torrance, California. I was trying to tell people about this life. I was trying to share some inspiration, and then they screamed, they yelled, they wanted to silence everybody else. I'm asking every person who cares about the First Amendment, left, right, everything in between. Please support us, please support our citizenry here in the city of... We are seeing this hate group shutting our meetings down.
Let her out! 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 Let her out!
They're coming, the cops are coming, these people are out of fucking mind.
Mary Anne! Fuck them, we need to get them out!
This is our America, I hope you're happy, Jesse.
I'm not happy, what am I happy about? What am I to be happy about? I'm not acting stupid. What are you guys getting out of this, man? You should be hating Planned Parenthood. They should be teaching young black women to stop having babies without fathers. You guys need to listen to candidates on.
Why are you speaking on black women? Are you a black woman?
No, I'm not, no, no, black woman. I can say whatever the fuck I want. Fuck you.
Fuck you too, and fuck your mama for having them.
This is what happens when women won't have sex with you, I can't fucking relate.
You're a woman? That was such a human, it could be worse. Are you a man? Very much so. You, you know the difference?
It looks like they haven't had pussy since pussy had them.
Ouch.
Fucking butt, there you are.
What are you, bitch? You look like a fucking alien.
She, listen to her, everybody should have listened to you over here. Hey, that guy's from Politicon, what's up? That guy's at Politicon. Mark, playing some to follow that guy. Come on!
Yeah, nothing, but probably still got a rest.
Well, so for all of you who go to high school...
We need to pay our next, next, next month, this is Nema. So we need to get patriots out here to shut these fucking people up. So I'm calling on all patriots to come next Tuesday, next, next month. We'll post a date, let these motherfucking people out. It's just me and Arthur here, so they're trying to gang up on me, on us, but I ain't fucking backing up. So, fast forward, man, we need to come this, next month. This is happening once a month, right?
Every time there's a meeting.
So, we're gonna try to get some patriots to come here.
Do you care about my rights? And the rights of everybody else whose right to speak has been suppressed?
Oh, they got the green hats.
Yes, they do.
The green hats are here.
The green hats are here.
To consult with you in case you get arrested, right? You know, we need to bring a lot of patriots here.
You okay?
I stepped on your head. We need to bring some patriots to this meeting, we need at least about fifty, because... These people get out, out, people target.
This mean, I don't get this.
It's, it's their faith.
Instead of clapping, instead of clapping, they do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, they are, I agree, I agree with you. You know, what do they accomplish in doing this? Not a damn thing.
So here we are in the city of Torrance, and, uh...
Things got wild here today.
Mayor was forced to shut down the meeting, then issue a 403 threat to the Black Lives Matter people. The police had to then physically escort and then ultimately push people out. Uh, one of the guys got in his face, started pushing back. Yeah, it was turning into a melee pretty quickly.
Yeah, well, I got pushed through, I almost got, they almost snapped, but they managed to get others and they pushed them against the door. The last few that were coming out.
Damn, I wouldn't have this excitement over there.
Yeah, Temecula would have been pretty staid.
Wow, this shit got crazy, man.
She's talking about freedom of speech, but what about mine? I'll find my silence. My rights were taken.
How about my attorney's on the phone right now?
How about I don't care? You're too loud. So this is what happened. So your rights, mine, all of these people, their rights were taken away too. All of them. All of them. All of them. Now, you know what? They only waited like eight minutes, and I was sitting, not disrupting anything, and they arrested me on my knees apart. I think about that. They screamed and yelled and touched anybody, they even charged me with resisting arrest? And I didn't even resist arrest, they cuffed me and I walked out, as they let me in.
So what do you think they accomplished today by them doing this?
They have only accomplished brazen anarchy and a disregard for black lives, all lives, all black lives. This does not help black lives. There are still black kids trapped in crappy schools, there are still black babies being aborted in Planned Murder.
Nine hundred a day, to be exact.
Nine hundred a day.
But they, but they ain't protesting that. But they ain't protesting that.
But they're, what are they protesting? They're protesting a guy who didn't follow orders and was already in the vicinity of two...
They should be teaching their kids to comply. When I get pulled over, yes sir, no sir. That's what they should be teaching their fucking kids. They should be teaching their little girls to stop having babies out of wedlock.
Where is the dads?
Yeah, I bet you this kid had no dad, I bet you this kid that got killed had no father, I bet you. And I don't even know, know them, but I, I can guess, he had no kid. So here, here we go. Black kid grew up fatherless, doesn't comply, gets shot and killed.
That's it, that's what happened. Michael Brown rushed on that cop, there was no hands up, don't shoot.
I'm sorry, when I get pulled over, yes sir, no sir, if he wants me on my knees, I get on my knees.
I still wanna talk about the God who trusts you. And I still wanna talk about the treasurer getting recalled. See, your rights are violated, their rights are violated, I, I'm trying to understand how this, how does this help? How is this bringing back those black lives?
Oh, you don't have a fucking ounce of humanity in your whole being!
She had a right to see the video, she got the video, did she not?
Should teach them how to comply, nothing would happen.
So... What?
If you comply when an officer pulls you over, not a motherfucking thing's gonna happen to you. Hello? When I get pulled over, pull...
I'm ready, and I said, they said my lights were off because I was in a rental, and I, and the light don't come on automatically, I said, done, done, I'm gone, no problem. Now, don't get me wrong, you know, we shouldn't want a police state. Don't get me wrong, the police need to be held accountable. I talked about that black guy in New York City who got choked, that shouldn't have happened.
Yes.
Okay.
The crowd here is so out of hand. They disrupted the meeting, yelling, uh, getting in police officers' faces. Uh, and then they wonder why they get arrested, they wonder why the cops beat the fuck out of them. I'm sorry, if you don't comply, guess what's gonna happen?
Okay, the recall, but I'm talking about public notice, right, okay, how about the other agenda items? That's gonna be interesting.
So, if, if you don't comply, shit's gonna happen. Learn to fucking comply, period. I don't give a fuck if you're black, white. Learn to fucking comply. Now, what the fuck is that? Is that a boy or girl? That's a fucking dude, I can't even tell what the fuck he is. Not that I give a fuck.
Rumble, rumble, rumble. Uh huh, that's it. So everybody else's rights get stomped on, right? That's it, that's it, huh?
Now, this Asian kid's talking a lot of shit, man, he's probably the biggest pussy in law.
That's justice, huh? Yeah?
Gee, you're bad, homie, you're so fucking bad. Oh, I'm so scared.
Where did you go to seminary? Not to know Billy Gray. Nowhere, he's not a priest. And he called Deandre Mitchell white supremacy.
This guy was getting in front of the cops, telling them fuck you. And he was doing that, like, well, this is the reason why they get arrested.
He said, "We have a right to take land from all white people."
But it was the black people who enslaved the slaves.
That's true, yes.
But he doesn't know that.
Carson, it was found by black and Asian, it was a Japanese guy. So then you can't tell me, how about that?
I can tell you, I should not.
So, they were throwing evil, all kinds of evil, and he tweeted it, but then he erased the tweet.
He did, because we didn't have a last name of the person.
You know what? But why would you have tweeted it? That's what I wanna know.
Because so many people said it.
How many?
Like, three or four?
That's not a lot.
Yeah.
What were they saying?
They don't drop any...
Excuse my accent, brother. They should have arrested... I gotta hand it to the blue, they kept her cool. Thank you, officers. They're out of line, way out of line. They should be protesting nine hundred black babies killed the fuck every day. They should be protesting three thousand blacks get killed in Chicago. Where's Black Lives Matter then? I guess it don't exist. Right? Arthur?
Oh, there's, okay, they didn't lock us out. There you go, look at that, everybody. This is what's happening.
It got brutal in here, people.
Damn. Yee-haw! Amen, hallelujah.
Are these guys a priest?
No, he's not. It's just a nice collar.
Wow, does this church know he acts like that?
So you, all, all your friends, so everybody in Temecula, look what you missed out on. But you're seeing communist action, you're seeing militant abusive tyranny in action. And at least the city of Temecula has the speakers speaking. And at least the city of Temecula has the speaking in.
Yeah, well, they had a legit... They had a legit reason to be in Temecula, to fight communism. Over freedom.
Everybody's rights. Everybody's rights have been trampled on. The black people, the Hispanic people, everybody's rights. Are you proud of yourself? Smile for the camera, buddy. Smile, please! You're so proud of trampling on our rights and ruining our rights to be able to be represented by duly elected officials. I'm so happy. Isn't that great? They'll say DeAndre Mitchell's name?
Yeah, he's a hero, but he's a different person. He's not that he's doing what he's doing.
Alright, everybody.
Hey, Arthur, where's this guy, uh, the father? What church does he...
Oh, that's a great question. We should ask him.
You know, maybe we should go to his church and say...
We should go to his church, see how he likes it.
Right? Protest over there.
Oh, we got another camera guy! Oh, we got another camera guy! This is adorable! Look at this! Look at this, the whole world can see here.
Jesus, man, this was out of line. It was all these people claiming to be Black Lives Matter, uh, protesting. I mean, I feel sorry for the mother who lost her child, but this is not how you do it, man. This is pure victim mentality.
Do you see how hostile they are?
Yeah, it's victim mentality. It's victim mentality.
Why do they have a problem with people who don't look like them?
It's victim mentality.
Why do they have a problem with people who don't look like them?
You harassed these black women. I told you about that, didn't I?
Oh!
Didn't I tell you about that?
That's an assault, man. That's an assault.
Didn't I tell you about that?
That's an assault.
I want to. Yes, I can. Go over there again. Do it again. Go over there again. Do it. Come on, come on. Come on, go over there again.
Why did you lose your temper?
That's an assault, bro. You know... You know what? You know you're gonna have him arrested, Arthur. That's an assault. Arthur, that's an assault.
Believe me, I know.
Arthur, that's an assault, bro. He assaulted you.
Why do you have a problem with black people? Why do you have a problem with black people?
If you touch these women again, I'm kicking your fucking...
Answer it. Why?
He didn't touch her.
Why? What is it?
Arthur, why don't you just have him arrested? He assaulted you. I have him on video. I have him on video. I have him arrested. That's assault. Officer, we have it on video that that black gentleman assaulted Arthur. I have it on video.
He needs to make a report, a battery report at the police station.
Alright, there you go.
We already know the gentleman. Yeah, so we'll find him. Okay, let's do it. Okay, off we go. Hey, Mr. Barnes, you wanna help me do the report?
Stay here like a couple of damn kids.
Okay, I want you to come with me in the police department.
No, you don't. You don't. He doesn't need to go.
Oh, he doesn't need to come? Okay.
Hey, look, he wants to file a police report.
Bye-bye, thank you. You wanna come with me? No? Be sure. Be sure?
Where's the police department at? Next door, right? File the report, man. Fuck him. Fuck him. I have him on video.
Can you go off line for a sec?
Huh? Yeah, hold on, guys. I'm gonna pause it.
I need to do this, because I have to be able to talk to you.
Hold on, how do I pause this shit? Okay, this priest, supposedly whatever the fuck he is, assaulted Arthur. Yeah, alright.
Yeah, they're not gonna be able to do that right now.
No, you can file the...
Okay, I need that off, so I was talking to you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, guys. There's nothing to see right now.
Let's see, uh... How do I pause it? Do you know how to pause this thing?
Oh, what you do is you just open up another frame or something. You just close it.
I'm gonna... I'm gonna cut the video off, and please share this to let everybody know we need to come to this meeting next month. This is once a month, and these motherfuckers are harassing and shutting down everything. We need patriots out here. So, we need boots, man. So that's why I want you to share this video, so we can get people out here, man. This is brutal, and fuck them. So, uh, see you, guys, man, and, um, MAGA.